Good morning, everybody. This is the time and place set for the Zoning Board of Adjustment for the City of Pittsburgh hearings on October 17th, 2024. And our first case of the morning is Zone Case 147 of 2024 for 214 Provost Road. The applicant is identified as Michelle Carney-Cromlish. Do we have Ms. Carney-Cromlish here? Are you with us, Michelle? Could you unmute if you're here?
She's here. Her hand is raised.
Michelle, could you unmute and let us know that you're here? We can't hear you. Michelle, could you unmute yourself so we can hear you?
There we go.
There we go. Great. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. Are you the only person who's going to be presenting this morning? Or is there somebody with you?
It's just myself, since I'm the homeowner.
All right. And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is Zone Case 147 of 2024 for 214 Provost Road. The application is for the use of an existing one-and-a-half-story garage, and they're requesting a variance from Section 912.04.E. There's a one-story maximum accessory structure height, and one-and-a-half stories is requested.
All right. Michelle, we have your materials up. Can you explain, is this an existing garage? Is it, you want to build a new garage? What's the issue here?
Okay. It was a one-story garage, and I had added a half of a story on for storage.
And when was the addition made?
Through the springtime summer this year.
Okay. So this is a case of asking forgiveness instead of permission. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I mean, we have ruled against cases like that because it's not permitted. But can you explain a little bit about where the garage is, and what the height is, and how you intend to use the additional story, half-story?
Okay. The slide before the one that's up now was showing that I posted the variance letter or the posting on my front door. I did it up close, and then I slid across the street. The garage is down my driveway off to the right-hand side, based on the survey. On the picture on the right, you'll see the garage in the back.
Okay. And when, the original, you said you added to an original garage? Is that?
Correct.
And what was the height of the original garage?
The original garage height at the peak was at 12 feet.
And the peak of the garage now?
Is 17 feet.
Okay. And so is it truly a half-story? Or is it livable space in the extra height?
The five-foot, and the peak is, it's only five foot, and it tapers down. It's all just for storage, because we're in the flood zone, and I've lost so much property over the years.
And it's, is the, I'm assuming that there's some electricity for light and maybe the garage door, but is there any plumbing in the garage? Is there any intent to convert it to usable space? I mean, livable space?
There is no electricity. There's no plumbing. There's no heating and air conditioning in there. It's just all open stud walls, and the intention has always is the first floor is, you know, vehicle parking for my car and my husband's motorcycle. And the second, or the half a story or whatever, is also storage, just to get it out of the flood area whenever the creek comes up, because the creek actually runs right behind the garage.
Do you have any, do you have any photos of where the, sort of in the context? I mean, what's around it?
On each side of me, well, on the right side of the garage, I have a neighbor with their yard, and my fence has been there. And the picture, it's on the screen, the front, the first one is looking down the driveway at the front of it, and off to the bottom picture is the side view. And in the back, there is hedges, and then there's the creek right behind there.
Is it something that, did you discuss this with your neighbors when you did the addition? Or you just did it?
Well, my neighbor to my right at 212, she was fine with it and all that stuff, because she's lived down here as well with all the flooding and all that stuff, because she even has the house from when her parents owned it.
So where's the creek?
And if you're looking at the picture on the bottom, it's behind the back of the garage.
Okay.
The creek actually splits my property with the hillside. It's behind the house.
All right. I don't have any other, did you have other materials that you wanted us to take a look at?
The only thing was, I submitted was showing what were the existing, and how that was the drawings that were sketched and all that stuff, and then what was done. I mean, put a new garage door on there, the sides, when we had taken the first-floor sides off underneath the original aluminum siding, there was the old wood siding, and a lot of it was all destroyed because of the floods over the years.
Okay.
More or less. There's nowhere to keep storage anywhere, because, you know, we've gotten it in the basement as well. As you're familiar with that, in the Overbrook area, we have the, what's behind the house is called the Wayman Run Creek, and it runs into the Somme Run Creek. It runs along 51.
Okay.
And 88. And all the development upstream of us in Whitehall and the other neighboring boroughs, with them removing all the trees and stuff like that, and green space and putting more housing, it has increased the height of the water it's been in the creek and everything.
All right. Well, thank you for your explanation. Ms. Burton Falker, Mr. Richardson, any questions for the applicant here?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
And thank you both. Is there anybody who is attending this morning who has questions with respect to the application for 214 Provost Road? If so, raise your hand so we can hear from you. I am not seeing any hands raised. So Ms. Carney-Cromlish, thank you for your presentation. We're going to accept your testimony and the exhibits as part of the record, and the Board will issue its decision within the time permitted under the code.
And roughly about how long is that?
So, under the code, the Board has 45 days to issue a decision, but we try to be faster than that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day, ladies and gentlemen.
I didn't hear it. Okay. We are a little ahead of time, so we're going to pause for a minute and a half before we call the next case. So patience until 9:10. All right. We're moving up on the 9:10 time, so we'll just talk slowly until then. The next case of the morning is Zone Case 149 of 2024 for 3129 Liberty Avenue. The applicant is identified as Kevin Kordak. Do we have, who is going to attend or present on behalf of the applicant?
I believe the applicant is Johnny Miller. I'll promote him to panelist.
Thank you.
Hi. Do you guys have me?
Yep. Mr. Miller, are you the only person who's going to present on behalf of the applicant this morning?
Madam Chair, we also have attorney Terrence Ging. He will be present on our team.
Who is that?
Terry Ging. Terrence, it may say on his.
Okay.
G-I-N-G.
Well, we have Terry's iPad, so.
I believe that may be.
That's me.
Okay.
There he is.
And I'm going to ask both the applicant and counsel to swear in, because, yes, counsel, I know you're an attorney, but you could stray into factual information which should be under oath. So do each of you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do we, do we have a second "I do" in there? Apparently not. So somebody's not going to be telling the truth. All right.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
This is Terry Ging.
All right. And are you duly sworn?
Yeah, I won't be providing any testimony, though.
Well, that's all right. You can still swear in, just in case.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Shepke, could you read the case in, please?
This is Case 149 of 2024 for 3129 Liberty Avenue. The application is for off-site parking for a multi-unit residential building. They're requesting a special exception pursuant to Section 914.07.G.2A to approve the off-site parking, and a variance from Section 914.07.G.2A, which requires that off-site parking shall be no more than 1,000 feet from the entrance to the primary use, and an off-site parking area located 1,175 feet away from the primary use is requested.
All right. Who is, who is, we have the materials. So this is a multi-unit residential that we've already approved, subject to a requirement of parking, but there's a new parking scheme being proposed?
That's correct, Madam Chair. And I can walk us through the, it's a very short presentation.
And for the court reporter's sake, could you provide your name and your relationship to the project?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is Johnny Miller, and we are currently serving as an owner rep on the project and as a general contractor on the project.
All right. So what do we got here?
Okay. So if we could go to page one, it's just the cover page. The location on the map is basically the upper end of the Strip District. We can proceed to the next slide, please. This is just our posted placard, which was also emailed to Daniel on the day that it was posted, just for verification. So close-up view, and then from street view. So close-up, obviously, on the right, street view on the left. Next slide, please. So this is just Kevin put the presentation together, but he was having a surgical procedure this morning. He did verify distance after this was already in, and he did come up with 1,184. So I know there's some nine feet in there, but I believe that as I walk us through the presentation.
Well, it's more than 1,000 feet, so.
Yes, Madam Chair. Correct.
It's within a margin of, whether it's 184 or 172, but it's, it's, it's more than 1,000 feet from the property.
Agreed.
But where is, where is the park, how many parking spaces are required? And where is the parking area that you're proposing?
Yes, Madam Chair. So the total parking on this project required 20 spaces. We are requesting, in the special exception, three of those 20 to be off-site. The parking is, off-site is 3340 Smallman Street. And the next slide, which I'll actually read through the actual word, so I'm not worried about this.
We'd rather not read. I mean, we, it's just, it's, is it in the same zoning district?
So, yeah, the slide that you see, Madam Chair, the, on the left, yellow dot, yellow pin, is the site with the 20, which required the 20 spaces. And then if you follow the arrow all the way to the top right side of that screenshot is the actual proposed off-site parking. And so, under Article A, off-site parking, number one location, so no off-site parking space shall be more than 1,000 feet from the primary entrance, et cetera, et cetera. The next sentence specifies this distance limitation may be waived by the Zoning Board of Adjustment if adequate assurances are offered, that van or shuttle service will be operated between the shared lot and the primary use. So on the record and in our presentation, we are committing to provide van or shuttle service, and we are happy to provide whatever assurances in whatever manner are deemed appropriate by the ZBA in order to meet that position.
That is an option. I mean, you're also seeking a variance. So if you had the variance from the distance requirement, you might want to provide the shuttle for the convenience of your tenants. But I want to go back for a second. The proposal for this off-site parking is for only three of the 20 spaces required. Are the other 17 on-site?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. And I just, I don't have 100% recall.
Oh, no, that's good. Yeah, that's all right.
So, all right. So we're only talking about three spaces?
Yes.
And would, is it your intention that it would be, three of the tenants would be assigned the distant off-site parking, and 17 would be allocated to tenants who pay more or something? I mean, how are you intending, is it a first-come, first-served in terms of parking?
I believe the intent of the ownership would be, first of all, I know that parking would be in the shuttle, or, sorry, in their lease agreement, parking is an additional fee, that would be a monthly parking fee. And so I believe his intention is that in the event that someone, you know, would not have adequate parking, that obviously, which I'll address further down, it requires ownership to be of the same each parcel, but that the three off-site parking would be able to have shuttle service, and also, I believe, you know, and again, some of this is subject to his final approval, but that potentially those three off-site parking spaces would be a lower rate of monthly rent in addition to providing shuttle service.
All right. Let's, I think we have an idea of where parking is as compared to the building. Are there other materials that you want us to look at?
So just as far, just through the ordinance zoning classification, you had already requested, but I will confirm, number two in zoning classification requires that both, both of these parcels be, shall require the same or a less restrictive zoning classification, and I'm just confirming for the record that both parcels are zoned UI, so they are the identical classification.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
And then, under number three report from the Planning Director, Madam Chair, obviously that would be at the Zoning Board of Adjustment's request. So we have no ability to input that. Number four, which is the final, is off-site parking agreement. This is just in the event that the off-site parking is not under the same ownership. Both of these parcels are owned by the same owner, so number four is an unnecessary requirement for us.
But it could be if one parcel were sold. How had the, what was the original plan for these three parking spaces? Or you just found you didn't have enough room for 20 spaces on-site?
Yes. So the original plan did require a lift system inside of the garage.
Oh, right. Okay.
And what necessitated the off-site parking was, when we began construction, there were bad soil conditions, and the footers had to be enlarged for the structural integrity of the building to the extent where they encroached on the specified pads that were to hold the parking system.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, Madam Chair.
I don't have any other questions. Mr. Richardson or Ms. Burton Falk, any questions for the applicant here?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
All right.
Terry, is there anything that you feel the need to speak into?
No, not at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is there anybody in our list of attendees who would like to comment or raise questions with respect to the application for Liberty Avenue and the revised parking plan? I'm seeing no hands raised, so we will accept the exhibits as part of the record and the testimony, and we will close the record, and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both for being here.
Yes, thank you.
All right. The next case of the morning is Zone Case 150 of 2024 for 5414 Second Avenue. The applicant is identified as Jeffrey Di Benedetto. Do we have the applicant here? Could you unmute yourself, please?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Are you the only person who's going to be presenting this morning?
I am.
All right. And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is Zone Case 150 of 2024 for 5414 Second Avenue. The application is for the use of the second floor as an, of an existing mixed-use building as a dwelling unit, and they're requesting variance or review from Section 911.02. Single-unit residential is prohibited in the UI zoning district.
Okay. And could you give your name and position with respect to the project, and a good spelling for the court reporter?
My name is Jeffrey Di Benedetto with Hart Architects, the architect for the project. Spelling my name, G-E-O-F-F-R-E-Y, last name, D-I-B-E-N-E-D-I-T-T-O.
Great. Thank you very much. And we have your materials up, so could you explain where the, is this, is this a case where there has been a residential unit on the second floor, but it wasn't appearing in a certificate of occupancy?
Correct. Basically, there is no certificate of occupancy on record with the city for this building in its history, and it is our understanding that the residential unit which is on the second floor, the building in question is the one in the middle here with the green on the bottom floor, the green is, for those familiar, Dilematos Market, which is a small independent grocery store. And the upper level is a residential, and we can, we can go to the next slide. Just for the sake of context, the building, the one in the middle here, the site is shaped like an L. There is an old garage in the back of the lot that is not pertinent to this conversation, but just for reference, that is also being torn down. Next slide. We are in the urban industrial district, as Daniel mentioned, and you can, actually, we can go to the next slide just for the sake of context. The brown area is the UI district. It is relatively small, just a two-square-block area. Directly across the street is a residential district, R1.
Okay.
Next slide.
And, yeah, I was going to say, do we, do, this is a certificate of occupancy from 1980?
Yes. This is the most recent one on record for actually the adjacent property. This is 5412. I'm presenting these for the sake of context, that there are other residential units.
Got it.
You can see in here that this one says vacant store and one dwelling unit, and actually, the next slide is for a building that used to be two doors down, south of our project. This one, this building no longer exists. It has been torn down the last 10 years, but it used to be a beauty shop and then two dwelling units above.
Do we have, do we have any indication as to when the second-floor unit had been used for residential? I mean, when was it last used for residential?
My understanding is that it is currently not occupied, but as recently as a few months ago.
Okay.
And prior to that, it has been used continuously as a residential unit over the life of the project.
And thank you for that clarification. So this, the project is, you said you're going to be tearing down the garage, but the proposal is to be renovating the second-floor unit?
Yes. Well, there's no work associated with this. This is just for documentation, for, you know, certificate of occupancy at this point.
No, I appreciated that, but I'm just, you're trying to.
The intent is to make.
Clean up, clean up this certificate of occupancy issues.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The, next slide, please. And these are just photos for reference. This is clearly, you know, an older-style construction, roughly 100 years old. You can see the fireplace has been there a long time, even has old gas lamp-style fixtures. Next slide, please. And again, the kitchen, clearly this is 1950s or earlier. That sink is really old. The cabinets are very old. It's been here a long time, all radiators upstairs, the old Castorian style. And then I think there's one final photo here, just another view showing that it's just a residential unit has been and has been used as such for the life of the building.
It seems to predate the current zoning code requirements for UI, not allowing residential in the.
Correct. And actually, I think we somehow skipped a slide. There's actually three above, just for the sake of reference, just to see. Yeah, right there. This is a street view from 2007. The two, the, our building is the one now, actually, this one, the one with the red at the bottom. The one to the right with the brown roof, that one has a current occupancy for residential, and it's still. The two buildings on the other side, both of those have been torn down, but you can see that all of these buildings were originally built with the same kind of style, storefront on the first floor, and then residential on the second and third floor for those two that do have it. So it was built within the same context. All the neighborhood was built roughly around the same time, and residential was originally meant to be kept as part of it. I'm not sure exactly when the zoning district changed to UI, which then disallowed.
Well, it could be that it was UI all along, but this condition predated whatever, whenever the zoning ordinance and the zoning map was adopted, but.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. And then all we're doing is just seeking, you know, the ability to have the residential unit in the existing building, just maintain it exactly as it is.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for that presentation. Is there any questions from Ms. Burton Falk or Mr. Richardson?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
No questions.
All right. And thank you. Is there anybody participating who would like to comment with respect to the application for 5414 Second Avenue in Hazelwood? I am not seeing any hands raised. So, oh, wait, there's a hand raised. Is this with respect to the application for Hazelwood?
Yes, please.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
This is Vera England. I'm here on behalf of Ryan England. He's sick today and is able.
Well, sorry. This is, this is a different case?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry. That's why I was curious. This is, we're looking at the application for Second Avenue in Hazelwood. I think we're turning to your case next, so pause for a moment. All right. Anybody wishing to comment with respect to Hazelwood? I'm not seeing anybody for the Second Avenue in Hazelwood. We're going to close the record, accept the exhibits as part of the record, and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. The next case of the morning is, is it 9:30 yet?
We've got one minute.
It is not quite 9:30. It's almost. All right. But I'm going to, I'm going to call it anyway. The next case is Zone Case 151 of 2024 for 621 Lenora Street. And Ms. England, the applicant is identified as Ryan England, and it's my understanding that there's going to be a request for a continuance because Mr. England wasn't available to present this morning?
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody here who wanted to comment with respect to the application for 621 Lenora Street? I'm not seeing any hands raised. So do we have a specific time for a new hearing for this applicant? I'm not seeing any hands raised. So do we have a specific time for a new hearing for this application?
The next available hearing would be November 7th at 10:10.
Okay. So we'll double-check with Mr. England on this and for the other interested parties who might be concerned about it. But, so November 7th at 10:10 is when we will reschedule the hearing that we are continuing today for 621 Lenora Street. Thank you for being here, Ms. England, and I hope Ryan feels better.
I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right. So the next hearing is scheduled for 9:40. And because it's only 9:31, we are gonna put up a sign that says we'll be back shortly, and we'll be back shortly at 9:40. Thank you. All right. We're gonna go back on for the last case of the morning, since it's close to 9:40 here. The last case of the morning is Zone Case 143 of 2024 for 3820 Perrysville Avenue. And the applicant is Lataj Tinker. Do we have Mr. Tinker? Could you unmute yourself, please, so we can hear you, Mr. Tinker? We know you're there. Could you just unmute yourself, please? There you are.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was trying to find the mute button.
No, there you go. Hi, how are you? Are you presenting on your own this morning, or is there somebody with you?
Yes, ma'am. It's just gonna be me.
All right. And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is Case 143 of 2024 for 3820 Perrysville Avenue. The application is for the change of use to three dwelling units, and they're requesting a special exception pursuant to Section 921.02.A.4 to allow the change of a non-conforming use from medical office with one dwelling unit to three dwelling units.
All right. So we have your materials up. Can you tell us a bit about the property and what you're proposing here? Wow.
Again, good morning, everyone. My name is Lataj Tinker, architect at Tinker Design, and I'm presenting on behalf of my client, McCormick Development. Could we go to the next slide, Daniel, please? So essentially, our project, we have an existing two-family dwelling structure. We would like to convert it to a three-family dwelling structure. So looking at this slide, we can see that where it's located, it's located in the R1D, L, single-unit detached residential low density. And our property is located in the Perry North neighborhood. Next slide, Daniel? All right. So just looking at the past occupancy permits for this structure, we see that it has always at the very least been a two-family dwelling. If you look to the top, and I don't think you can see it that well, but the top certificate of occupancy, and I think this dates back to like circa 1949, 1950 or so, you know, it was a two-family dwelling with a dental office on the ground floor space at the small bumpout, which we'll see in a few later slides.
And I'm just gonna ask you to pause for a second. So the, there was the two units, and then the space for the dental office was separate?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. If you can picture, you know, the typical house, you know, just a rectangular house, the ground floor unit was, the ground floor space is one unit, second and the third floor was another unit, but there's a bumpout to the front, and I'm gonna show you in the next slide where the dental office was.
Thank you.
And then just going back to 1979, 1980, I think it was a two-family dwelling with a one-car detached garage. Our next slide, Daniel? So here we have some existing photos of the site, and if you look at that first photo, that structure one, that's where the dental office was. Excuse me. I bumped out. You can see your...
From an architect's perspective, is there any indication as to when that protrusion into the front yard, that additional first-floor space, like from a construction standpoint, can you tell when that was added?
My best guess would be probably sometime in the 1900s, because I know this building goes back to the early 1900s, 1910 or so.
Okay. I was just curious. I mean, it looks, it looks like a separate attachment to the building. Okay. Carry on.
It was definitely an Alphata. It was definitely an Alphata. Just going to the next slide, Daniel? We just see a few photos of, you know, the ZBA poster which we mounted. I think we mounted that on September 26th. Of course, we mounted it at a location that was clearly visible to the public, so it's at that bumpout which faces the sidewalk. Our next slide, Daniel? So we are here to request a change of non-conforming use for the structure from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. We don't anticipate that this change will pose any negative effects to the overall, I'm trying to find the right word, the overall day-to-day operations of the street and the neighborhood. You know, in terms of hours of operation, you know, of course, it will be primarily prevalent in nature. In terms of the number of parking spaces, we are proposing three off-street parking spaces, one for each unit. And you'll see that in two slides down, we have the existing one-car garage, which has one parking space, and then the driveway can accommodate two other vehicles. There will be no employees. We're not proposing any change to the building. We're not enlarging it. We're not making it smaller. You know, we're gonna maintain the existing building footprint. In terms of the design characteristics of the building, you know, we're just replacing the elements in kind, new windows, new doors, you know, new roofs, nothing, nothing that's gonna throw up the overall character of the street, street state. And in terms of traffic generation, you know, Perrysville Avenue is very busy, you know, it's a very busy secondary thoroughfare. We don't anticipate that, you know, adding just one more tenant to the building is going to substantially increase, you know, the overall traffic flow or negatively affect it.
Can you, can you give us some sense? First of all, it seems like it's a fairly large parcel. Have you done the calculation as to what the lot size per unit would be with three units?
I have not, to be honest with you. I have not done that.
Okay. We can do that. It's like, do you, but do you have the lot size?
Yes. If we go down two slides, all right, Daniel? You can see the dimensions of the parcel, but I don't have the square foot of hand, but I can look in my files.
I was gonna say, we can figure out the math. I was just wondering if that was something that you had looked at. And then the other question is, what, it is an R1 district, so are there, what's around it? I mean, you showed us pictures of the existing structure and the current condition of the existing structure, and I understand that it's a few doors down from an LNC district, but what other kinds of structures and uses are in the R1 portion of the neighborhood?
Daniel, can you go up just one slide up? So we do have a few precedents of nearby two and three and even four-unit family dwellings directly adjacent to our site. There are two, three-family dwellings. Across the street, there's a four-family dwelling. And then we have a few duplexes that are scattered along Perrysville Avenue. And I do apologize for not showing you those duplexes.
Do you, I was gonna say, do you have any sense of whether the other multi-unit residential uses, I mean, were they originally constructed for multi-unit? Do you know if there was a change in the zoning district designation at some point?
So for the two units, which I told you after our site, I mean, my guess is that they were constructed for two-family dwelling units. I mean, just the way they are set up, you know, they both have two entry doors, all of that good stuff. But I think at some time in the last, you know, maybe 20 years or so, you know, they were converted to three-family dwellings. I do share the certificate of occupancy for all of these, well, at least two of the units as well. I could not find one for the structure across the street, which has four units.
Okay. Well, there may be a reason for that. All right. Well, but you're showing us examples of other multi-unit uses in the immediate area. That's why I wondered if at some point it maybe had been zoned R2 or R3, which would have, and then with the change of zoning, it would have changed that condition. But, all right, we'll, we can take a look at some of that, but I am curious about the lot size and the lot size per unit, just in terms of density. Do you know, have you or the property owner reached out to the immediate neighbors about what has been proposed here?
Me, I have not personally. I'm not sure if the property owner has done so. But I can follow up with them.
Okay. Do, I don't have any other questions. Mr. Richardson or Ms. Burton Falk, any questions for the applicant here?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
And I think we've run out of attendees who might want to comment, so I'm going to ask the question if there's anybody attending who would like to comment, but I'm not seeing anybody. So thank you, Mr. Tinker, for your presentation. We will accept the exhibits and your testimony as part of the record, and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
And I thank you to the board for the 100% this morning.
That concludes...
That's it. We're done for the day.